All right, the time is 6:30 PM. I will call to order this Wednesday, December 20, 2023, regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg as well as the news graphic and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have some state proclamations. Mrs. Strobel.
The state of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamation. December 4th through the 10th is Computer Science Education Week, and all proclamations are available on the district's board docs webpage.
All right, thank you, Consent Agenda, Dr. Clark.
All right, with regards to the Consent Agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on November 15, 2023, the special school board meeting on December 6, 2023, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, is here to provide an overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. This evening, we seek board approval and recognition for the retirement of CHS Guidance Counselor Pam Geiser after 24 years of dedicated service to the Cedarburg School District.
Is that all you have on your report?
That's all.
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, I have a motion on the Consent Agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. I will second that.
A motion and a second? Is there any discussion on the Consent Agenda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay, we've got one, two, three, four, four yeas and zero noes and--
Three yeses.
No, three yeses. I'm sorry, three yeses. You ask a lawyer to do math. There's one extent--
Two.
Three to two?
Oh, I'm sorry, I only heard one. Okay, sorry about that. Two abstentions. So it passes three to zero to two. All right, superintendents, report, Dr. Clark.
All right, this evening marks the last school board meeting of 2023. It's hard to believe that winter break is literally two days away. Like usual, there's been a lot going on in the Cedarburg School District. Over the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to watch some of our students enjoy a concert provided by the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, attend the performances of our high school choir at the Cedarburg Rotary-- Cedarburg Grafton Rotary Club and Thorson Elementary School, along with the jazz band performing at Thorson Elementary School. This is a small set of what our students are doing throughout the community at this time of the year. The impact of our students on our community and beyond is truly remarkable. One of our community groups that helps to highlight the support of our students is the Cedarburg Education Foundation. I would like to now invite Mr. Mark Martino, President of the Cedarburg Education Foundation, to provide us with the annual Cedarburg Education Foundation update.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for taking a few minutes or allowing me a few minutes to kind of go over what the CEF has accomplished over the last year. Just a quick overview of what our mission is. Effectively, we're just trying to help coordinate between the community, businesses in our community, and help identify alternative sources of funding to provide additional support for the district and the students. Couple of quick stats. We were founded in 2006. We've had 62 board members and 14 student ambassadors. We've granted over $680,000 to date. The endowment balance is a little over $450,000. And again, kind of the mission is to drive innovative curriculum across the district. Couple milestones for the last two years. The main source of funding for the CEF is through the Bulldog Gala, which we hold every fall. In 2022, we raised a little over $160,000, and we just had our gala last month and raised, again, close to $135,000. Just a quick overview on some of the grant activity. So in the school year last year, 2022, 2023, we awarded $89,350 in grants. And this year to date, we have over $43,000 in grant applications that we're reviewing for approval. And again, we've done over $680,000 since our inception in 2006. At the gala in November, we recognized some special members of the community, some of your colleagues here. So we recognized for the Innovator of the Year Award Krista Penrod and Sherry Rowe. So this was primarily for their efforts in the Girls in STEAM initiative that they did. For the Founder's Award, we recognized one of the past superintendents, Dr. Herrick. He was actually the, kind of the founder, the original founder of the CEF. It was his idea, his brainchild, and he developed the steering committee that ultimately resulted in the Cedarburg Education Foundation. And for Business of the Year, we recognized Pioneer Pet Products. They're a great steward to the community. They've been extremely generous and have donated as sponsors to the CEF for as long as I've been on the board, so at least six years now. And they've done a lot for other organizations in the community. So they were an easy candidate to be recognized as the Business of the Year. Couple updates on some big projects. As you know from last year, the Velo Foundation and Velo USA provided the CEF with a $120,000 grant over two years. That money is being used to fund the recording studio and the media lab, which you guys can actually see from where you're sitting. So I think this is just a really unique project to kind of highlight the cooperation and collaboration between the CEF and the school district. And I definitely want to recognize and applaud the district for how quickly they were able to implement the facilities and how closely their team worked with Velo and the CEF to bring this to fruition in less than a year. It's really impressive. And again, this media studio is part of that. So the fund need for this year's gala was the Virtual Reality Lab. So this is a space that will be going into the high school on the second floor. And we look forward to partnering with the district again to bring this to fruition hopefully in the next year or so. And then just a quick list of our current CEF board and student ambassadors. So, any questions? All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Casey Boe, Principal of Cedarburg High School, will provide an update regarding the high school schools.
Thank you, board, for having me here tonight. I'm looking forward to sharing a little bit about what we've been working on at the high school. You get to hear a lot about assessment data, different data sets from the elementary and middle school. The high school's a little bit of a different animal, and we have different data sets that I'd like to kind of highlight for you here this evening. Maybe I can act out the data sets for you.
See if I had a gap. That would make the difference. Oh, there you go. Yeah. Yeah, it'll take a while to reset.
There we go. So some goals for this evening are to provide an overview of student data and some of the focus work we've been working on at the high school over the last couple of years, how that informs our strategic vision and where we're looking to go within the future, and then have some time to answer any specific questions you might have at the end. So the-- Okay. So our first slide here, this is readiness outcomes for students from the 11th grade ACT test. The point I would like to highlight on this particular graph is the distance between us and the state that we achieved over the last year. You can see that the trend had been kind of closing over the last several years. We've rebounded nicely to the tune where we've never had a bigger gap between us and the state of Wisconsin than we do right now, especially when you're looking at students that are meeting all four readiness benchmarks. So again-- I'll make it through, we'll be all right. The next slide, if we can see it, here we go. This is the ACT. So the ninth grade and 10th grade dots are the predicted ACT score. The 11th grade dot, the orange dot, is their actual ACT score. So a way to think about this is if we were growing students at the exact rate that the ACT would expect, we would expect those three dots to be exactly on top of themselves. That's not what we see. The last, the last three years where we have multiple dots, we're seeing that students in their freshman year come in at their lowest level. Then as a sophomore, they grow significantly, and then we have the biggest jump from the sophomore to the junior year on that ACT test that really ultimately matters the most for our students. So you'll also see that the trend since the class of 2018 had been declining. We seem to have bottomed out in the class of 2023, and we're climbing back. One point, that last data point, the 22.56 of our current sophomore year class is lower than our last year. So that's an area of, like, what's going on there? There is a new test, so the test did change. So we're going to need a little bit more data and time to figure out whether that's, whether that's a real thing or whether that is a function of a change in assessment. One of our goals at the high school, since we're not organized in grade levels, although you just saw a chart where we're measuring grade nine, grade 10, and grade 11, that's not how the high school is organized. So we look at things that we could focus on as a whole building. One of those areas is critical thinking. So critical thinking, we see as an important skill for all of our learners to grow in over their time here. Defining critical thinking as being able to analyze and evaluate an issue in order to form a judgment. An area that we've decided to kind of hone in on this through is through writing. So looking at the ACT writing rubric, we felt like that did a really nice job at outlining some of those critical thinking skills and provide a framework for our teachers and our students to grow in this area. So I highlighted some of the areas of the ACT writing rubric that I feel like really hone in on critical thinking skills, like helping students critically engage with multiple perspectives of a given issue, to provide an insightful context for the analysis of an issue and its various perspectives, looking at and analyzing an issue from the complexities and tensions that often arise from complex issues, supporting their claims with insight that broaden context and provide skillful reasoning. So taking a look at writing, something that we can do across all the content areas we can all focus on together and try to move the needle for our students in this area. So we did that for one year. This is the result of that work. You can see on the graph, the 2022 is orange. You've got to forgive me, I'm colorblind, and Karen helped me with these charts, so I appreciate that. And then we've got blue is this most current year. This is a pretty remarkable change in just one year's time. So this is, you know, the result of efforts of our teachers and our students working to really promote this writing that's aligned with that rubric and then demonstrating it on the ACT test. On a high-stakes test, we have over 80% of our students that are over the state average in writing, whereas previously we had, like, less than 50. So a more than 30% jump in one year, more or less unheard of in these types of data sets. So we're really proud of the hard work that our teachers and students have put into this. Continuing to work on our collaborative culture, so you hear a lot about professional learning communities. I just put this slide in to kind of give an outline of what it is that we're talking about when we talk about professional learning communities. This is, the three big ideas are that we are moving from what is taught to what's learned, that we're really focused on high levels of learning for all students, that we believe that collaborative teams outperform isolated teachers, so focused on working together to address issues. We're going to make more gains for our students. And then ultimately, knowing the extent to which our students are learning, so a commitment to results and database decision-making, using that evidence to support student learning on an individualized level if necessary. The document that's on the right side of the slide, which you can't see, but I can, is our document that we made at the end of my first year here that really laid out what we believed and what we're working to become. So every spring, we've been surveying staff in the, in the building on kind of how they think-- it's more of a self-assessment of how they think we're doing in the various areas of the professional learning communities model. And you can see there's like 13 different areas. I'm going to highlight two of those areas here tonight. One is an area where we've really been excelling. That's the organization for collaborative teams. We have self-assessed that we're at the developing level there. I'm going to walk through kind of what all has taken place in that area that I feel like has resulted in that high score. And then also, towards the end of the presentation, highlight supporting all learners, which is our self-assessed lowest area and what we're doing to address that score. So our, in, in the actual work of a professional learning community, this is kind of the foundation or the logistics of how it works. Every teacher has 85 minutes per day to plan for their instruction. During one prep period per week for at least 45 minutes, our collaborative teams meet. No teacher in the high school has more than two PLC teams that they meet around. And so not all of our courses have a PLC associated with them. We offer way more courses than that. We also utilize our Late Start Thursday collaboration meetings, which are 37 minutes long. Two of those per month are focused on just looking at student assessment data that they've collected within their classrooms generally, and then making plans for how we can support and extend students based upon that information. We'll have one department meeting where individual department leaders will be meeting with their departments to go through more administrative material. And then a one-building, whole-staff meeting where we're going over school-level administrative items. We utilize the Early Release Fridays to work on smaller projects. There's not a whole lot of time there to get heavy things done, but enough time to get together and discuss, you know, issues of the moment. And then our all-day PD days are organized to really move our whole school initiatives forward, like writing, focusing on critical thinking and developing those strategies to help our students. So a data set, so if we, if we care about professional learning communities, we want to measure how it's, how it's going. One way we do that is through that survey. Another is through the PLC notes form. So we have, currently have 36 PLC teams in the building that are composed of two to four teachers. As of the 27th of, of November, when I pulled this data, we had held 330 meetings that are all focused on the four questions of the PLC process. Question one, what do we want students to know and be able to do? Basically, like the curriculum, the standards. Question two, how are we going to know if they've learned it? Like, what's, what's our plan to assess whether or not this learning has occurred? What are we going to do if they haven't learned it? And then what are we going to do if they have? And you can see some of the most highly utilized practices within each of those questions, just for some context as to what a PLC meeting might be covering. This is a notes form, so as the teachers meet, they fill out a notes form to kind of-- this goes to their, their departments, it goes to their department lead, and then it goes to me. I read every single one. A lot, there's a section in there for teachers to ask questions or ask for support or clarification on different things. So it's a good way for me to stay in the loop with what all of our teachers are doing, as well as for them to kind of document where they're at in their scope and sequence and how they're managing the four questions. This example on here is from AP Psychology from 11/27/23. Some of the things I would point out from the notes is the use of "we." You can see that they're clearly working together. This is not one person making decisions about what students-- about the four questions that I just covered. The, the assessment plan, they're going to give a shorter test on the 11th or 12th, followed by a free response question. They're also planning formative assessments along the way to make sure that students are learning before they get to that summative, so they're not blindsided with a poor score on their summative without a chance for remediation. And then they also have a plan for remediation during our resource time that they're going to offer on the first or the seventh. I think it's also important to point out that this is AP Psychology, so this PLC process is not just for our struggling learners. These are really, these are college-level classes that we're PLC-ing around. And even at those courses, our students still-- we still need to remediate struggling students. We still need to enrich kids that already got it. How can we take them even further in these high-level courses? So now, so that was kind of highlighting a strength. That was the organization for collaborative teams, one of our highest scores and highest areas of growth. This was our lowest self-assessed area, supporting all learners. In the box on the left there, the, the bullet-pointed elements are the actual items that our staff members were ultimately not selecting to get us a score that was a little bit lower on that survey. So things like the school has a highly coordinated system of interventions and extensions in place. That's an action item. So what have we done? We've increased our PLC team coordination through the notes form that I just kind of went over. We've diversified our resource offerings and differentiation. We've added building-level coordination through our supported study hall. We didn't, the staff didn't feel our system was very proactive. It was hard to coordinate with-- we weren't coordinating with our feeder schools as well as we could have. What have we done? We've really put a focused effort into improving our freshman transition process. We've, we've reached out to our parochial schools earlier. We've gotten email addresses from parents, so we now have direct communication with them. We've attended parent-teacher conferences at Webster for the eighth-grade families. We met with over 100 families over the course of two days there. We revamped our freshman preview event to make it more personalized, more opportunities to have conversations. And we have, I don't know, 13 or 14 ideas to even make that better next year. Our system was not as fluid as we thought it needed to be. So we've changed, we've, we've made our adjustments weekly, and our building-level adjustments to our systems of support are at the six-week cycle. We felt like we could monitor student achievement on a more timely basis. We've increased our differentiation by adding a supported study offering in between. So typically, we would have, a kid would have study hall. Last year, we added the silent study where students would come to the IMC and they would have a more controlled environment to study in, surrounded by the writing center, math center, and other adults in here to support them. This year, we've added the supported study, which is guided by a supported study plan. So now a student that's been in silent study for two consecutive six-week cycles, we're actually building a plan with counselors and teachers and our associate principals to-- all right, let's dig in and figure out what is going on with this particular student, what is getting in the way of them having better than Ds and Fs in all their classes. And then we've also made sure that this is guaranteed for everybody. So every single student has access to this model. So this is probably my favorite data set and the last data set that I'll share with you this evening. This is new data that we started collecting. We started collecting DNF data last year at the whole school level, so we were just looking at total number of kids in the high school that have at least one D or an F. This year, we've disaggregated that out to not only track the total number of students with at least one D or an F, but then also looking at the individual classes. So we've got freshmen, sophomore, junior, and senior lines on the bottom. You'll see that there are, it's not a perfect straight line. There are some anomalies that are in there, and those dates that I've kind of outlined on the bottom of that graph are the progress report times and the quarter times, where we'll see more volatility in student grades as they're taking care of last-minute work and getting things turned in and caught up before the, the grade terms come in. But overall, you'll see that the, the trend is down. Like, we, we have students come in at the beginning of the school year. There's a lot of volatility when there isn't a whole lot of grades in the gradebook, so you do poorly on that first thing, you might have a D or an F for a little bit. But over time, they're getting things figured out, and that, that number's decreasing. The last number that we just pulled, we have around 200 students right now with a D or an F in a, in a class. Last year at this time, that number was 335. So these are all little bits of information that show to us, to this whole school and administration, everybody that's working towards these goals, that really, when we put our minds to something, we can make a difference. These, these are not foregone conclusions. This is not just, you know, kids come in, they're smart, they learn, it happens. We can really, we can do better. And the things that we're focused on manifest themselves in changes in our data. When we look at, you know, dig deeper into this data set, we can see that the blue line, that's our freshmen, is pretty much consistently the highest group that we've got. We know we need to do something there. So we got to dig in, figure out what's going on with our freshmen. How can we bring them along? How can we work with Dan at the, at the middle school to transition them over and make sure that they're prepared on day one for the expectations of the high school and how things operate and the, the way that we do things a little differently than, than they do at the middle school? So these are all the, kind of the highlighted areas on the left side. Those are our real areas of focus, but we're working on so many things. You just can't, you can't do everything all at once, but I really feel like we've got a good plan. We're focused on the right things, and the things that we're focusing, focusing on are helping our kids. Like, they're, they're doing good, so.
Fantastic.
Questions?
I have a question about, maybe not so much on the data, but more on the, the soft skill kind of aspect of it. And most of this is anecdotal, but during the, you know, the coronavirus year, where we basically let a lot of, like, you let exams slide, we let-- in high school, and this is before your time, but just some history. And we also, we can very lax with deadlines and holding, you know, the students accountable to those sort of things, having, having exams and adhering to deadlines for projects, for exams, being able to do retakes, being able to take the exam or hand in the assignment whenever they want. And I saw that continuing after the coronavirus year, and I'm wondering how we're doing on that. Are we, have we looked at, at that as a-- no, it's not a data point, but as a, as a focus?
It's definitely a focus. I mean, I think where, where I would say what you're referencing is manifested is kind of in this chart, in the chart of the students with Ds or Fs over time. What we, what we're trying to do, like, this, we're not, we're not improving student grades by saying, let's make our courses easier. Like, that has never been communicated. We're, we're trying to grow rigor. We're trying to focus on assessment. We're valuing data. So all the things that you're talking about, if a, if a student is retaking a test over and over and over again, the data becomes, it's different. It's different data, right? So we're saying, let's keep the rigor up, but we still need kids to be successful. So let's invest some time and energy right now into making sure that we have the support systems in place so that as we continue to raise rigor and focus on these assessments and all the soft skills that you're talking about, our kids can still be successful.
Are we doing anything to ensure that-- like, do we have any policies in place or any kind of guidelines where, where the, the, the teachers are, you know, say, required to have the kids adhere to deadlines or not, or anything like that, or have exams or not have exams?
But we have, we have an expectation that every teacher will have an exam. Students will show up on that day. There will be something being assessed on that day. And that had, I can confirm that that had become relaxed over time. So that has been reinstated, and we're working, we are collecting exams. So we are creating a, a shared drive with, that's really going to catalog all of our end-of, end-of-unit, end-of, end-of semester assessments. And those are really summative. They're not meant to be retaken, so that's definitely the direction we're going. There are formative assessments in the, in the system that are really for learning. It's not necessarily a, it's, it's not the-- a, it's not the end-of-chapter assessment, where I do think it is appropriate for students to have multiple opportunities to go back, retake that thing. So there's going to be a, there's going to be a hybrid, but those end-of-unit, end-of-semester quarter-type exams, we're cataloging, and the expectation is that they're going to be given.
Okay, and how about, like, assignment deadlines and project deadlines? Do you have any kind of expectations set out yet on that kind of, because I've heard, I've heard a lot of stories about the, you know, a project being due whenever, or a, it sounds like, it looks like K-12 has heard the same thing.
Yeah, it's, I understand what you're saying. So one of the things, and what you've said definitely segues way into, segues into some of the comments I have. You know, over the past, I would say, probably six years or so, there has been a significant increase, and it's not just my courses, it's across the technical system, across the UW system, where students are under the impression that due dates don't matter, that they can turn things in late, and it's okay. And you have to explain, you know, you need to have these things in by a certain time, you know, and I'm, how much of that comes from, you know, the examples that you had given, Dave, about, you know, okay, well, we're going to be a little bit more lax, because, you know, we want to give them more chances and whatnot. It is, it is an issue, you know, because it's, a lot of, a lot of our students go from high school to college, and I have seen our students in the classroom, you know, and unfortunately, it's an issue, it is an issue.
It's an issue for us, too. It's like, how do we take them from, we're living probably in the same space, really, because they're coming to us with the same lack of skill, right? So we're going, okay, what can we do over the four years that we have these students to develop this skill? I think a lot of what you're seeing manifested in that blue line on the chart behind you, those freshmen really don't, really don't get it, right? So they're, but they have to be successful. Like, we have to, we have to recognize this as a skill that they need to be taught and learned, and so we're committed to that. It's not easy, and it's...
Well, so what we used to do is say, whatever your assignment is, it's due on X date, and if you don't turn it in by X date, you get a zero.
Yep.
And then you're, and then maybe there's a retake for half-credit or something, I've seen that before, but that's, that's kind of how you learn it, is by doing it. You don't learn that skill by being able to pile in, you know, all of your assignments on the last week of class, because there was no due date. And that's kind of what, what I'm, it's also, I think, probably a learning issue, too. If your, if your students are not doing the assignments at the appropriate time, they're not learning in the appropriate manner, and I've seen that, and I've heard of it, where a lot of it has to do with no due dates and the relaxed accountability, I think, and some of that, I saw it starting when we, when we did, when people were dealing with, you know, the coronavirus stuff, and I just haven't seen it come back.
When do you, when do you think, when do we start teaching that? At what point in a K-12 system?
Probably first grade, would be my guess. I mean, I'm not an educator, but I think that that's, if I'm, if I'm a parent and I'm trying to teach a skill, a lifelong skill, I would start as soon as the kid can understand it.
Yeah.
It depends on the kid, obviously.
So we, we've done a bit of a backwards design of how to attack the various things. We have the same concern, I can say that, like, I hear you, and this is, we want to do better here, too. We do grade terms every six weeks. So some of the volatility that you see that are like six-week cycles of student, students having less Ds and Fs, that's due to, they don't want to be in silent study. They don't want, they want to get their grades up. So there are deadlines set, I guess, at the building level, that if you don't have this done at the six weeks, when the six weeks is up, then you're going to be, then we're coming in to help, then we're saying there's something going wrong, and then the, this document here, the supported study plan, may really get into, you're not turning things in on time. How do we organize? How do we calendar out your strategy so that that's no longer occurring? So we're taking this as, we'll give, we'll give students the opportunity to get things turned in on time and meet deadlines. If they can't do that, we have a tiered support system where we're actually going to look at, all right, what's the root cause behind why this isn't occurring?
Seems to me that the first step, though, would be to have a deadline.
There are deadlines, we do have deadlines.
Do you, with the PLCs, I would think that would help with now having these various teachers within a department talk about, because I know there have been teachers who just have had a very lax grading policy of, you know, one teacher will say it's due by this time and another teacher won't. And it appears to me, over the last couple of years, that has been tied up, where, and I don't know if that's coming from the PLCs, where the teacher's talking amongst themselves about what their expectations are of homework and everything when it's graded and so forth.
That's exactly right. The expectation is that of these teams that are PLCing, that those courses, that should be a shared experience for all students, whether they're taking it in my class or your class as a teacher, the due dates, you know, we're on an alternating block, so it may not be on the exact same day, but assessments are due, or projects are due on approximately the same timeline, they're worth the same number of points, they're named similarly, you get the same amount of time to do them, so that there's a fairness and a guaranteed aspect of our curriculum and assessment system.
Can you just remind me what OC is shorthand for?
I think that, oh, in the, in the PLC notes, I think that's operant conditioning, that's that actual AP Psychology content.
Okay. And then, just so that I'm clear, I, when I was reading this, my impression was that the extra attention is primarily if a student is struggling, but then I thought you had shared something in speaking that sounded to me like, if a student is excelling, what to do then? Are those same students being, am I misunderstanding that, or is that what you mean?
That's what I mean. It does, there, so this, that's actually a PLC of two members. They're, they each have two PLCs that they sit on and work through, and so they may not be able to do both enrichment and remediation simultaneously, but they do both, and that's evidenced by, if you see on the, I don't know what slide this is, on the question four, of the 330 meetings that we've held 110 times, they've planned strategies for enrichment for students. 63 times, they've created additional activities to enrich student learning, and then 25 times, they've taken those plans and strategies and assigned particular students to resource to attend and get that enrichment.
So the last portion is kind of what I'm wondering, that STAR Center, is that only for enrichment if you're struggling, or is that for enrichment if you're excelling?
Primarily for if you're struggling.
So for students that are potentially excelling, is there, what is that, just communication to parents about some suggestions about what to be adding?
There may be conversations, there are certainly conversations going on through the counseling department on what courses we should be thinking about taking in the future, but also, like, within the PLC model, we're talking about, you're doing some great work in here, and I'd really like you to know about this additional concept that we wouldn't otherwise cover in my class.
Sure.
I'm going to sign you up for resource tomorrow, and we're going to go over that, because I think you will really benefit from that.
And then for the supported study plan, is that, it looks like it's student-filled out?
It is, it's student-filled out. There's a meeting then between the student and the counselor to kind of, you know, dig a little deeper and pull out some more information from the student, and really make sure that we're understanding from the student's perspective what they feel like they need, and what, where their struggles are, because we want to promote these behaviors and these skills in students. We're not, we're not coming to save them, we're coming to support them.
I did, this will be my last comment, I did wanted to just double-check that I was understanding what it was, so thank you for confirming that that's what it was. What I liked about seeing that was that it was, to me, or is to me, kind of a scaled-up version of what I saw as an elementary school parent for the, the, I'm sorry, guys, I'm just still struggling here, but, for your conferences, having student self-assessments. So I do think that's really valuable, to have that starting younger, and then seeing it also continue at the high school level. So thank you for confirming that I'm reading it correctly.
I had a question, and I apologize if you went through this before I got here, I came in late. It's on the last slide, slide 12, the Common Assessments. When you last presented to us with kind of one of these CHS overviews, you had talked about that being one of the big goals and all the benefits of having these common assessments, and I was just hoping to get an update on, have they fully been implemented across all the courses of study? Are there some areas where you're still hoping to have those, and it hasn't been implemented yet, or how is that going?
It's, it's going well. I would not say we're at full implementation right now. We've been, I've been working with Alan and his team to kind of build the shared drives. There's a, there's a organizational structure, we want to name these things appropriately, we want to put them in folders so that they can be accessed and utilized over time, so they're not living in individual teacher folders, so that if they were to retire or leave, that we would lose access to that. So there's been a lot of work on that end. Where the high school is right now is semester, the big summative exams are being catalogued now, so they're, they've been created. Now we're cataloging them and putting them into the folders, so that they will have some durable value to the system over time. We can start looking at, you know, how do we collect data out of these individual assessments? There's, it's going to be a long process that will probably never be completed fully, like, it's always evolving, always improving assessments, you're always adopting curriculum that's going to change some of the, some of the things that we're going to focus our assessments on. But I feel good about the progress that we've made from where we were when I got here, for sure.
Okay, thank you. I have one thing. So I am so happy to see the emphasis on critical thinking, because that's really been lacking for quite some time. One of the areas that we're struggling at the collegiate level is plagiarism. It is increasing exponentially, and AI is not helping.
Yeah.
So definitely, whatever faculty can do to, you know, part of critical thinking is, it's your own thoughts, you know? Outlining what plagiarism is would really be helpful, because it's, we're seeing so much of it, and it's getting very sophisticated, too, you know, so if I can plug that.
We, we're seeing it, too, at our level. There are things that we can do just by how we set up our writing assignments, like doing a rough draft, for example, and it's really hard to do, to have AI do a rough draft for a final paper, right? So there are little tricks and things that we can do. I think handwriting still matters, so we don't have to type everything out, so the student can do, can do outlines and, you know, rough drafts with their pens and paper is another, like, low-tech solution to try to get, to get around it, but yeah, I can echo that we're seeing increased AI, and that it's hard to catch all the time, I'm sure it's going on much more than we're catching.
Just to add on to that, we actually had a meeting this afternoon, or this morning, with all of our principals talking about the academic honesty and, I can't remember the exact words we were using at the time, but essentially the, coming from the students' home, there, and that was a K-12 discussion.
Fantastic. So you've got, you've got a plan in for, I like the idea of them doing the handwritten outlines, and I think that, not only does that prevent plagiarism potentially, but it helps the thought process a lot, too.
For sure.
Reminded me of the Blue Books from college.
Oh, my goodness.
I love those.
They're so hard to grade, though, the handwriting.
That's true, that's a good point, I never thought about it from that perspective.
I just want to say, I really appreciate you and your staff. I've had kids here a long time, and I've really noticed some really positive changes over the last couple of years, and I really appreciate them. I mean, one example would be moving the, when the kids got their classes, it used to be days before school started, and now they get them in spring, so they're really able to look at what classes they signed up for and kind of think about it all summer, instead of that mad dash, like, wait, you know, that. And I think how you guys were preparing, you know, the Webster students coming over here, I think you didn't get into that today, but looked at, gave the students and the parents a breakdown of kind of the time involved in each class, so when they're looking at their class load and what other extracurricular activities they want to do, that they can kind of plan, is this realistic or not? And that's huge, especially for making that jump, and so I just, there's so many things I really appreciate to all of you, thank you, and keep it up, don't stop.
Yeah, keep moving. I know you want to.
Yeah, no, I want to keep moving, yeah, we got, this is a great, great place. I am, I'm super grateful for all of our teachers and our team, and the support of the board, and just the opportunity to be here, so, thank you. Thank you, Bishop.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to transition a little bit into talking about daily schedules, and we've had some conversations back and forth about, yeah, start-in times, and again, just want to let people know that this is a conversation that administrators have frequently. It is a topic that comes up every couple of years, and it is something that is not as always easy to come up with a workable solution. There's always solutions, solutions is, you know, it's time and money, and how it impacts people. One of the other things I think is important to recognize, and especially when we take a look at some other districts around, not every district works under the same parameters or with the same parameters. And a common one in our area that comes up is when they talk about Whitefish Bay, which a couple of years ago made a transition to later start time. One of the parameters that Whitefish Bay doesn't have to work with, that we do, is busing. And so Whitefish Bay, every parent is responsible for delivering their kids to the school, and so they have the ability to make some of those start times and not worry about bus transportation. That is something that we have to, that we have to take a look at. So this evening, I wanted to be able to provide a little bit of an opportunity for that conversation, also wanted to take a look and start off by what our current reality is. Again, I won't read everything that's on the slides, but on the left-hand side there, you can see what our current start and end times are. One of the things to recognize in our district is that we have a two-tier bus system. What that means is currently our buses, they pick up all of our middle school and high school students, they deliver them to school, and those same buses then turn around, pick up the elementary school kids, deliver them to school, and then they essentially do that at the end of the day also. You really need, in a two-tier system, you really need about 45 minutes in between the routes, so the end times of school, to be able to make it work, I put up there 35 minutes, because that's kind of what we currently have, although some of you who have kids ride the bus recognize that the end product is, yeah, there's some buses that are late every day. And so the more time you can actually build in there as a buffer, the better scenario you have. The other thing that we have to think about with any schedule is the afternoon and the evening activities that we have. What I put up there is currently, especially in the winter season, you have two levels of, or two times of athletic practices. We have one that starts at 3:00, the other one that starts at 5:00. So any adjustment to the end of the day at the high school would impact when practices start. Likewise, at games, we have three levels in Cedarburg, generally a JV2, a JV1, and a varsity, and you can see up there then the times that those start, so any adjustment there would potentially require those to move, although those are usually pretty set, so any adjustment to the end of the day means you're going to have kids missing school. And then in our district, we have a lot of rental groups, and those usually start at 7:00, so whether you're thinking about Cedarburg, you know, youth basketball, or all the different activities, those come in there. And then again, at a high school scenario, you have kids that have after-school work shifts that start. A couple of other things in terms of the parameters, there are some state requirements. Middle school and high school, actually 7th through 12th grade need to have 1,137 hours of school in a year. Elementary school or kindergarten through 6th grade needs 1,050. How does that turn out in our district? Well, based on our start and end times right now, that really ends up with us having 175 school days every year. We also build in inclement weather days, so as a school district, you are required to meet those hours, and the state really doesn't care what happens, you know? So if we suddenly get a bunch of snowstorms, we've got to still make sure that our kids meet those hours. And so we do that by building in some inclement weather days, and you can see there, we have different levels at all of the schools. Hopefully, we never have to reach those, but sometimes that does happen. When we think about busing, when we think about the school start times, there really are about five scenarios that the Cedarburg School District could implement. As I said before, some of these are going to come down to money, some are going to come down to time, all of them will come with a change, and it will impact individuals. Some people would be happy with a change, other people would not be. And so just a quick overview of these, one is if you had all the schools start and end at the same time, or approximately the same time. One is you could move all the start and end times back. Another one is you could adjust the high school and middle school start and end times, and then move the end time back for the elementary. Likewise, there is a potential of swapping the middle and high school with the elementary schedule, you know, if the idea is to get the element, excuse me, the high school kid starting later. Again, an example in the area, Ellenbrook- Again, an example in the area, Elm Brook did that a number of years ago, except Elm Brook, they have a three-tier system. They actually did the swap with the middle school and high school. So now their middle schoolers start at 7:30 and their high schools start around 8:00. And then the fifth one that is an option there is you could move the start and time back to the high school and middle school and keep the end time the same, no change to the elementary school. Now, what does that look like in reality? So one thing to keep in mind, while there isn't truly a recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics, they have done some studies, they've taken a look at things, and a start time around 8:30 is kind of what they recommend. Again, if the district were to make a change, we could do whatever we wanted to. But if we moved it to 8:30 and we wanted all the school time to start about the same, it could look like this. The reality in this discussion is what we're talking about, though, is going to a one-tier busing system. The challenges with that is every bus you add costs money. Right now, we essentially run 11 buses on a tier-two system. This wouldn't exactly be a double, but we'd essentially be running around 20 buses. Costs a lot of money to get nine more buses. The other thing is, and this is where this is an impractical solution, is nobody wants to drive buses. We already don't have enough bus drivers. We certainly would not have enough bus drivers if we were in a one-tier system. So that is a possible solution. Right now, there just isn't, isn't the reality.
When we looked at this a couple of years ago, it was, it was a cost issue that was, I think a lot of board members thought was not, was insurmountable. And now it seems like, yeah, we've got the cost, which, you know, maybe, maybe not, but we're having trouble, like, with the bus company getting us enough bus drivers. So we'd have to have a bus company that could provide drivers and maybe we could at some point.
Yeah. And again, you can see some of the other barriers in terms of after-school activities, when they would start. Again, as I shared earlier, the, all practices would be moved an hour later. The biggest impact, though, at the high school level and even middle school level is you'd have kids that would potentially be missing a full class in order to make their 4:00 games, which are a product of the conference that we're in. One of the other options is if you moved all the start and end times back. And the challenge here, well, the benefit is we still maintain a two-tier system, but now, again, if you went to an 8:30 start time, your elementary kids are ending the day at 4:35, they're getting home after 5:00, 5:30 for some of the kids. Likewise, then, again, pushing it back an hour, pushing it back a half hour, you're starting all your afternoon activities that much later. There are also, I've got a couple of versions of really just kind of playing around with the start time for the middle school and the high school. If you did the middle school, high school start and end time, you could go at 8:30 to 3:45. You'll notice in the elementary school, as I said before, you need to have a certain amount of window in terms of the last, when the middle school, high school get out and then when the elementary school gets out so the buses can do their loops. So in this scenario, while the high school and middle school would be starting later, elementary school starts the same time, except now, again, our elementary kids are getting out after 4:30. You could just move it back a half hour and so now kids would be getting out at, the elementary students would get out at 4:05. Again, just some of the issues that you would have in that regard.
Kind of the same, but a 30-minute less problem.
Correct, correct. Then one of the other options is if you switch the middle school, high school with the elementary school. Again, you kept times, I adjusted the start time so it's not an exact swap, but you'd get your high schoolers in at 8:30. Well, your elementary school students starting at 7:30, all those concerns that we had about middle school and high schoolers waiting out at the bus at 6:30, well, now that's going to be our elementary. So again, not impossible and you can play around with that a little bit, but there's not a whole lot that you could do there. Again, you could probably start your elementary school another 10, 15 minutes later. Again, something that you would have to be looked at. And then finally, the last one, which seems like the most simplistic, is, okay, well, let's just have the high school, middle school start later. We won't adjust the end times, we'll leave elementary school alone and we'll go. If you did that with our current schedule, that means if you moved it back to 8:30, didn't change anything else, we'd have to add 28 days to the school year. If you just moved it back a half hour, then you'd have to add 14 days to the school year. Again, you can play around with a little bit, but there's no way in this scenario where you're not adding days to the school. So again, my intent today was just to be able to find opportunity for a little bit of discussion there, show some of the scenarios. It's something that I actually have spent a lot, a lot of time digging through and looking in, so.
Yeah, it's something that we had, I think, the board years ago had started looking at, just because of the studies that were coming out about the, how the early start times is not good for the, not the best thing for the kids. And as a way to perhaps, you know, raise things up for us, make things better for everyone. And like I said, the issue the last time was, it seemed to be the cost, the busing cost.
Generally, it depends on each, but generally you're talking about $70,000 to $90,000 per additional bus.
So I thought, yeah, it'd be a good idea to put this on the agenda, just kind of have the board kind of discuss it a little bit and see what anyone's thoughts are, if anyone's interested in exploring any aspect of this a little bit further, if there are questions, that sort of thing. Because we haven't talked about this in years.
I guess one of my, one of my questions would be, what are we looking at in terms of if we increase that distance that we're busing from within the district? Is that going to cut down on the number of buses or the number of routes that could make these start and, you know, these end times a little closer together?
We did take a look at that with Right Way, even as just a possible solution yet this year. In the best-case scenario is you would reduce one route and that's it. So if right now, at the, right now in the district, we provide busing for students at the elementary school level that are more than one mile away from the elementary school. State statute only requires two miles, so we could push it out to two miles. And again, if we did that, it would allow us to consolidate the elementary routes and reduce one route. We already meet the two-mile requirement for the high school, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact the number of buses needed for the middle school and high school at all.
Do we know what percentage of elementary school students use the buses?
About a third.
And do you know the average time of when they're getting home right now? So if their school day is ending at 3:35, you already have students getting, at the highest end, home around 4:35? Okay, but certainly sooner if not? Okay.
Sheridan, can you tell me again, how much per bus?
So it depends. The last time I did an end-up study was about three years ago with Right Way, and they were talking about $80,000 to $90,000 per bus. So, you know, if you needed to add five bus routes, again, this approximation, it's about $450,000 annually, every year that you would have to pay.
That sounds about what it was when we talked about it like four years ago.
And then can you just, this last portion resulting in some high school, middle school students missing last hour of the school day?
Yeah. So those are kids that are involved in athletics mostly, you know? So if you're in JV2, the game starts at 4:00. Well, if you're going to go out to Hartford, that's a little over an hour away.
Oh, I see.
And so, you know, that means you're probably leaving at 2:30 in order to get to that game. Well, if school's getting out at 3:30, then you're going to miss an hour of school.
And that would be for any kind of activity, really?
Yeah, I mean, it's athletics that's mostly impacted, but yeah. But there are still others, you know? Like I know our computer team has competition sometimes and, you know, there are other non-athletic activities that it would impact, too.
What, or I should say, how long ago have, has the North Shore looked at those game start times? You know, has this 4:00 been something that's been done for quite some time? Maybe needs to be reviewed?
It is, it has always been done. Ever since, I started in 96 and was, in 1996. And the issue has more to do with the last varsity game, which is starting at 7:30 and trying to, with the idea of trying to get kids home, you know, around 9:00. And so if you push the varsity game from 7:30 to 8:30, now those games are ending at 9:30, 10:00. And again, thinking a game out at Hartford, game ends at 10:00, takes about a half hour to get everybody on the bus, that's 10:30, now the buses are riding, coming home at 11:30. And on a Tuesday night where you have school the next day, that's kind of where that falls. Again, not to say that you couldn't. The challenge with that, because one of the solutions will get you to have like your JV1 and your JV2 play at the same time. Very similar to bus issues, nobody wants to officiate. So in many of our games, in many of our times, we're having a hard time just finding the number of officials to run the games as-is. And a lot of those officials, they'll do the JV2 game, they'll do the JV1, and they'll do the varsity. So again, not insurmountable, but those are some challenges that we have.
I feel a factor that's not really addressed in any of this and it's fine, it's just reality and it relates more to high school. And I mean, we have a lot of high-achieving students and I don't think it's a matter of when they go to bed and when they get up. It's a matter of just how much sleep they get in general because they're just loaded between, you know, athletics and working and, you know, their rigorous schedule of homework. And I would just, I mean, I feel like no matter when you do, if we move school later, they're just going to stay up that much later. And it's just, like I said, it's just a choice, but that's the reality of where our students are. I think it's amount of sleep that they get and...
I think the studies were more on the timing. It wasn't just the amount of sleep. It was, as I recall, it was on the timing of the sleep. That was actually an issue. And that was, I think, was...
Yeah, and that's where the, that's why I said that the academy doesn't recommend 8:30. It's their look at the sleep studies and just where kids are and that, you know, right around there is the one that would give kids the most amount of sleep, so.
Yeah, the studies show that the younger children naturally tend to get up much earlier. It's as you, as you age from early childhood into adolescence and into a young adult, your sleep patterns change to where you're naturally staying up later versus going to bed earlier. And so that, they're trying to accommodate for that shift of saying, okay, well, you know, the studies they're looking at are saying, if we want our students to be at, I guess you could say, peak learning potential, then starting them later in the day is what's better for those kids that are older versus the ones who are younger. So when you look at the start times that we currently have with the 7:30 and the 8:50, they should, according to the studies, be reversed if you want to go according to, I guess you'd say, you know, biologics.
And then if you were to do that, then you'd basically be, that's kind of like the half-hour difference at the high school and then you've got all the, all those potential issues.
Again, there's some latitude in that scenario where you could, I'll try and get that up there, where you could move a little bit with the, there it is, with the start time. So again, just if you think about your afternoon activities and all those things, 8:30 really is the latest you'd ever want to start a high school. Again, I think the 8:15 is a little more reasonable, but recognizing you need about that 35, 45 minutes in between the start time of one activity and the other one, you could probably have your elementary schools start at 7:45 and then that would give 45 minutes to 8:30. Again, some of the other things we've mentioned that people would have to think about is the impact to the end of the day now, starting an hour or so later.
Or another option that's not on here might be to bump the times back a little bit and then add a few days to the year.
Yep, you can always add more days to the school year.
A lot of moving pieces.
Oh, yeah, correct, correct. And that's, that's where we're at. Again, we know from calendar experience, you know, we're already out in the second week of June most years and going to the third week is, is something that we may not want to do.
Is there potential then, if we would look to add days, to play with those snow days because we do have the option to go virtual?
So we have the option to go, yes, although our elementary is not, we don't have that option at the elementary because we're not 1:1.
But their hours are already much reduced.
And that's why, that's, that's why that, so when you look at the three, four, five, if we had bad snowstorms, with the high school only having three, if we actually hit three days, then the fourth day would be a virtual, the fifth day would be a virtual. So, yeah, we've tried to account for that in our existing planning for the inclement weather.
So looking at...
But you could.
Possibly adding extra days, we could potentially do them virtually. Does the state make a distinction between bodies and seats in classrooms or if we could do them virtually?
No, we can do them virtually.
So if you have, say, you know, you do virtual half-days and if a family still needs to go, you know, you're traveling around your vacation, you could at least still get coursework done on a half-day.
Doing a virtual day is a positive that we would want to be adding to? I don't, I don't think I would support that.
Yeah, it's something, again, if you're thinking about it from an inclement weather day, that, okay, that's the alternative you have. So, you know, instead of having five inclement days, we have four or three. Yeah, I mean, certainly, those are all things that you could consider. Again, not ideal, I think one of the things we found through COVID is face-to-face is the best way.
Of course. But no one likes to hear adding 14.
No, exactly, exactly.
Trying to get creative, but if we do add two or three, you know?
Correct, correct.
Can we make it more palatable?
I have a question for Dave. Do you recall the last time this was discussed, if it ever, and I'm trying to be mindful of the time here, if it got past discussions at the table where there was input requested from, or, you know, a ask of the superintendent to get, glean some kind of input from staff as to how this would impact their drives to, you know, we have, so we have many families that have students at each of the schools and staff members that have students at schools. So I'm wondering how far it got in the process, other than just the finance.
Good question. It didn't get very far. It was a discussion, I think the superintendent was in the process of maybe putting together something like we just saw.
Okay.
And then we got hit with all the stuff that happened a couple of years ago. And it just, it didn't go, that was the last conversation. It was, it was just a very, very, very infantile, infant-level, or, you know, basic-level discussion, very...
I think for me, it's helpful to see the different options spelled out, more or less. But I think there's just a lot more input that I would personally like to hear from community members, from staff, from anyone impacted. I view myself as a parent of one student who does not take the bus as being on the very lowest tier of these different needs, right? Like, we can make anything work, that's not the case for the majority of our students and families. So to me, it would be very important to hear community input on this.
Yeah, I think one, another good starting point would be, so we're looking at a cost-benefit. So we see this, we see the, kind of the challenge here, right? What is the benefit? So can we, do we have access to the studies? Do we have access to data that discusses, you know, what, we could put, so we could put a, put something objective on the benefit to doing this? Because to me, that's kind of the question. If we, if there's like a really demonstrable benefit to doing this, that, you know, we might be, the community might be more apt to make bigger sacrifice than if it's not, right? Or bigger change than if it's not. So to me, that would kind of be the starting point.
Sure.
Well, that's one of my questions. I mean, I haven't, and I'm just one board member, but I haven't heard a whole lot of community feedback on a desire to change the start times for the high school or the elementary school. You know, we had the public comment at the last meeting that was really interesting, glad to hear it. All of the, I appreciate Dr. Clark putting these options out and really spelling out like what it means with, you know, students having 4:00 game times and working and, you know, elementary kids being out in the dark, waiting for the bus at 6:30 and seeing what the options actually are. I mean, I think that they all look really undesirable for all different reasons and I wouldn't, at this point, if we don't have a huge, you know, voice in the communities saying, "We demand a later start time for the high school," I don't see a reason, you know, just looking at these things, none of them look appealing. So I don't know how much effort is worth it to look into different options at this point.
That kind of goes to my point. I mean, it's like, to me, it's more, more a matter of what could it, what could it do more than what are, you know, what is the community? The community might not be alert to it, to the issue. So I'd be, if I saw data that said, yeah, there's no real benefit, then why would we want to upset everything? But if it looks really good, then we can keep talking.
And I can, I can look for some more of that. Again, just, you know, anecdotal information there. You know, we know Whitefish Bay has moved it back. I mean, they're a decent district. And Elm Brook is another one that has made some changes and they're, they're okay, too. Although I did do a survey just of the local area, almost all the other high schools are at our time. Again, not that that's the reason we should ever do anything, but certainly something that I can, can go back in and see if there's more data and more research on that and that I can go back in and see if there's more data and more research on that and provide some more information later.
It's really nice, I really appreciate you putting this together, because it's nice to see the various options, and it seems like there's a lot of flexibility to the options as far as the, which piece of the, which piece of the puzzle you're shifting around.
I guess I would like to see, you know, next step being a two-step process, you know, bringing in that hard data, you know, so that if asked why, what are the benefits we have them? But I would also like to see kind of echoing what Connie said, a request for opinion out to faculty, staff, and administrators, especially, you know, the middle, obviously at elementary school, but really the middle school and high school, because it's going to be the faculty and the administrators who see these kids every morning, day in and day out, who are going to be able to speak to, you know, if they believe this would be beneficial, since they're essentially at the front line.
Yeah, I would say let's, let's see what the, do the step one with the hard data, and then, we're gonna have, we would have to see what it, you know, see what it looks like. If it looks like we should be doing surveys, we can talk about that. It might be a good step, second step.
Again, one of the things I find interesting, too, is, you know, with the middle school, we have the number one middle school in the state, and with the seven thirty start time, and some of the others that have later start times aren't the number one, so.
Could we be better?
Yeah, great point, great point, exactly.
All right, I've got, are we, any more discussion on this? Okay, so I have on our agenda-
Just two more things.
Oh, you know what, are we, so we're done with your superintendent's report? Okay, well, the timing's good, because I was about to call for public comment, because we're almost to that point. Nobody signed up, but is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment? Okay, you've got one. So then I'm going to read a short disclaimer for you. This is our public comment disclaimer. Any district staff member, district resident, parent of a district student or student enrolled in a district may comment during the public comment portion of a meeting per Board Policy 0167.3. For this meeting, the community may address the board during public comment section of the meeting regarding topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. Individuals making public comment are not immune from liability during public comment and can be held liable for defamation or false claims. In the past, the State Attorney General issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as school boards should conduct a public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist the governmental bodies in avoiding violations of the state's open meetings laws. The essence of the open meetings law guidance is that unless the topic brought forward by the board is publicly noted, no significant discussion can be held in that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda where by discussion could then be helped. The reason for this Attorney General guidance is to ensure that all interested parties have the equal opportunity and advance notice to participate in the discussions with the full school board. Per Board Policy 0167.3, the board has the authority to determine if public comment may be taken, and if allowed, on what portion of the agenda comment will be received. Per School Board Policy 0144.2, the board will respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable laws. This includes but is not limited to information under current or imminent litigation and/or student-specific information per Board Policy 8330. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda for public comment. As always, you are also encouraged to contact board members outside of the meeting setting with your comments or concerns. Please note that the board members are limited to public engagement via email, as noted in Board Policy 0167.5. Almost. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As per School Board Policy 0167.3, each statement made by a participant should not exceed three minutes in duration. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Please state what topic you'll be commenting on. If you are under the age of eighteen or are a student in the Cedarbrook Schools, please only state your first name as a reminder. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the district's website. Thank you.
My name is Brian Lenz, I live at N75W5653 Bywater Lane. I almost didn't get up this time, because I knew I was gonna be the only one to make you read that again, so sorry about that.
Sorry.
I'm commenting on the changing, potential change in the start times. I want to say thank you to everybody for being open-minded and considering it. Dr. Clark, thank you for putting that together, it was useful. I'm glad people are going to keep talking about it, I think that is exactly the right thing to do, is make sure we can get all of the pieces and the positives and negatives and see how things line out. One thing I wanted to ask is, the high school, I don't have any kids in high school yet, but there's a Thursday late start, and that seems like a good way to kind of get people's feedback on what a potential move could be. How do you like Thursday versus the rest of the week? I'm also curious what, any busing changes that happen on Thursdays or any after-school, you know, all the things we talked about, how is Thursday different than the other four days of the week right now? We could also do like an eight fifteen start time and keep the eight fifty, that still gives a thirty-five-minute window, does not increase the buses, and it still gives the kids another forty-five minutes. So that is one more possibility. And I also wanted to mention that I spoke to the principal at Shorewood, and they changed as well, if you're looking for another, excuse me, another local example, and I know he would be happy to discuss with anybody if someone wants to call him. So, thank you again very much, I appreciate all you guys are doing. Thanks.
All right, and number six, recommendations. Dr. Clark?
All right, this evening we have three recommendations. The first recommendation is seeking approval for the high school athletics department to construct a golf simulator in the fieldhouse storage area. This request was discussed at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting and forwarded to the full board for approval. The golf simulator will be entirely paid for via donations and fundraising.
Is there a motion on the, you want, we need a motion for approval, is there a motion on the golf simulator?
I would make a motion to accept the golf simulator.
Approve.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second, is there any comment on the motion?
I just had a clarifying question for the background, where it states the funded through donations and the CHS athletic budget. So is that wording appropriate to what this, this motion is outlining?
No, that was a copy-paste here, I apologize.
Okay, so can we, so somehow, just in the minutes, reflect, reflect that, the motion is not through the, there's not, it's not through the athletic budget, but-
Entirely paid for via donations and fundraising.
Thank you.
And then when it needs to be replaced, does that then go into our budget most likely, or when things like that, that are SARDAS donations at that dollar amount, do they typically get like donated again when it needs to be replaced?
Yeah, so I think everything is a little bit different, but frequently, that would be the way that, that would have to be determined at that point, yeah.
Okay.
So kind of like the donation, you know, again, now, these are much larger dollar items, but the, at football field, the softball field, baseball, those, that was all kind of built in as being a fundraising component, yeah. The reality is, though, the initial purchase is always the most expensive part of it.
And there's no guarantee, of course, that there'll be fundraisers available, you know, fundraisers available to do it, so it is a potential, like, that the district would be paying to replace it.
Didn't it sounded, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
It sounded, from looking at it, that staff or other people at the school could potentially have an option to use it, or no, just the thing?
No, it would only be for students, and that is an insurance-based discussion that we've had, that it would have to be for our athletic teams and golf. I mean, I think we probably could do it with the, if I had, I'm just looking over, because I know when we first approached it, there are several staff members, oh, like, they wanted to use it. No, no, this is, would only be for students, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is it possible to hear back what the motion was, wording-wise?
The motion is to approve the purchase of the golf simulator using donations and fundraising and not CHS funds, or district funds, right?
Yep.
It says all funds to be raised via donations and fundraising efforts. So I've got a motion and a second, and is there any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously.
All right, the second recommendation is seeking approval for the high school to offer a new course called Small Engines and Power Technologies Level Two. This is an extension of the Level One course currently offered. As such, no new text or materials will need to be purchased to run the course, and it will provide the opportunity for students to take the test for the Briggs and Stratton Master Service Technician Certification if they desire. This recommendation was discussed at the Curriculum Committee meeting and forwarded to the full board for approval. Alan is here to be able to answer any questions we may have.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion or questions for Alan? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And the last recommendation this evening is for the acceptance of donations to the district. This month, we have two donations. We have a $5,400 from the Cedarbrook High School Athletic Booster Club to support various athletic programs at Cedarbrook High School, and $2,500 from the Cedarbrook High School Fine Arts Boosters to support vocal music, band, visual arts, drama, and tech theater programs at Cedarbrook High School. If the board approves these, that will be a total of $7,900 for December and a year, or an annual total of $53,069.80.
Fantastic. Turn motion on the donations.
I'll motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion on the donations?
For the first one, for the donation to support various athletic programs, how is that decided? Is that, I guess, just because the second one has the more in detail, I'm wondering, does the booster club have priorities list when they're fundraising, or quite how that works?
So generally speaking, it would be for the different, you know, every year they come through it, every season, to purchase balls, uniforms, different things like that. So it's something, again, I can't speak to the specifics of it, we, if, we could always ask John Hannum, and he'd be able to detail a little more in depth of what it was going to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem, I was just more curious.
Yeah.
I mean, years ago-
Okay. That would be a long list, then, for this, thank you.
And years ago, I was on the booster club board, and the athletic director was always at every booster club meeting discussing kind of the needs.
All right, motion and a second, further discussion, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Let's move to the committee reports, negotiation committees. Ericson?
So the negotiations committee met for a second time on November twenty-ninth in regards to negotiations with the Teachers Association. The outcome of that meeting was carried out during the special school board meeting that we had on December sixth. You can see those minutes, they were approved earlier. The vote to approve the four percent at a flat amount went through. The supplemental teacher compensation did not pass, and I believe that's going to be on the January third PNF meeting agenda.
Thank you. All right, Building and Grounds, Kate, that's all.
We met on December sixth. The agenda items included the golf simulator that we just voted on. We also discussed the long-term capital improvement plan and budget update. First on that list are the panels at the high school that have had some damage and we need to replace. We also discussed the district's natural gas winter usage pricing updates. We do have pricing locked in through September twenty-twenty-four. And we also talked about the director of Buildings and Grounds hiring update. Sheridan might be able to speak to dates on that, but it sounds like it's coming up here quickly.
Yeah, it's coming up here quickly, we actually had thirteen candidates, and they were really quality candidates. The first round of interviews will be on January fourth, with the second round scheduled for January ninth, with the hope that we'll be able to have a candidate to present to the board for approval at the January board meeting.
All right, thank you, Kate. Curriculum Committee, Elizabeth?
We met December thirteenth and had two topics. The first was the new Small Engines and Power Technologies Level Two course that was approved today. The second topic was a K through eight English Language Arts, or ELA, curriculum update on the pilots, and we had our instructional coaches from the elementary schools in Webster attend and give really thorough presentations on how the pilots are going so far. So at the K five level, the two being piloted are Amplify CK LA and Benchmark Advanced. And then at the middle school level, the pilots have been Study Sync and Into Literature, and we meet next on January tenth, and if you are interested in literacy, I highly recommend attending the Curriculum Committee meetings, because these meetings are really interesting to hear about how the new curriculums are going to even further align the district with the science of reading. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I'm now going to take a motion to adjourn it to executive session, and in light of recent guidance, we're going to take a roll call vote after the motion. So the motion would be to adjourn it to executive session to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to nineteen point eight-five-one C of the Wisconsin statutes. A, consideration of changes to administrative employment contracts for specific, sorry, district personnel. B, consideration of specific personnel for special education staff position. Then we would reconvene it to open session, and it is anticipated that the board may reconvene it to open session and may take action on one or more of the executive session items, and also an approval of the minutes, the executive session minutes, meeting minutes of October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three also could be approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I will second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Charlotte?
Aye.
Netzel?
Aye.
Strobo?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
careers and I, too, unanimous, we adjourned, thank you.